Stay by. Go forward, never let me bother you. God, 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 God. Father, we come to you today just to say thank you for your goodness, for your kindness, for your tender love and mercy, for how you keep and watch over us, oh God. Father, the best we can do to come and be in our midst as you do the city, goodness of the city of Harpsville. Father, help us to be mindful that the name of this city is Harpsville. So let us work one heart, one mind, and do what is right and good for all species. Father, we pray that you protect all of that, essential workers, fire, police, EMS, hospitals, protect us all, God, for COVID-19. These are the prayers we have in mind, God, through Jesus Christ, we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please. Item three on our agenda is approval. Amendment is the motion to waive reading and approve the amendments on August 10th, 2021, for every city council. Hey, ladies and gentlemen, discussion. All those in favor, please take a five. Aye. It is passed. Presentations, any public comments? Okay. Proclamation, we have a very special one today. And we are going to recognize National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Day. Chief, do you have anybody we can?
Father said today.
Father said, counsel, maybe we all need to come down there. Yes. Chief's going to get a moment to shine later on, too, right?
Oh, yes, sir.
Come on in.
Come on in.
We are proud to recognize National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Day, which is October the 3rd, 2021, and also October 3 through 9 as National Fire Prevention Week. The 20th anniversary of 9/11 this past week. It's all very much in our minds how much we are relied upon our first responders in so many ways, and we are very appreciative for not only our local firefighters, but firefighters all across the nation. Chief, would you like to say anything?
No, just thank you for honoring this with the proclamation and just remember fire prevention and remember the fallen firefighter. Not just firefighters, law enforcement, EMS, all those that we just went through, the anniversary of 9/11. I don't know if you watched any of the doctor memories, but it brings back a lot of memories of that day and a lot of hurt and pain is still going on. So remember that always, please, and never forever forget. Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much.
Okay, we're out of seat. And Chief, your backup?
All right, thank you very much.
Monthly departmental update, Chief Burr, our fire chief.
Well, thank you for the opportunity again, thank you for the proclamation, thank for allowing us to speak about the fire department. Fire department is founded in 1908, many years ago, here in Harpsville, and gone through a lot of things over the years, transitions, had three different fire departments. We have 117 suburbs, we're now. We cover the city and county areas, most of you know that. We cover the city of Harpsville, five miles in each direction for the county response. We cover population around 29,000, total 7,612 in town, and 21,000, and some odd change, out of the counties. So around 29,000 population we cover. One station, four engines, we'll get into that in a minute, one ladder, one support rescue, rescue truck, and other vehicles, support vehicles we have. So about 25, roughly, it'll take 25 square miles we cover out of one station. Next is our mission statement. I'm already here, so they can't read them on my little small paper. Mission statement, the Harpsville Fire Department is a team of dedicated, courteous professionals who are committed to protect the lives of property, provide a safer community. Our mission statement, Harpsville Fire Department is dedicated to remain a progressive and innovative fire department, ensures a safer community for your public education, fire prevention, training, and service. Our motto is working for a safer tomorrow. Our core values are, in order to accomplish the mission and the highest degree of professionalism, integrity, efficiency, and service to the community, the Harpsville Fire Department has identified the following core values. Devocation, service our community. Y'all didn't do that to everybody else. Service our community, the department, to the best of our ability, team, a group of individuals striving for one common goal, integrity, community partnership based on trust, respect, accountability through service, professionalism, courtesy demonstrated in a high standard, leadership providing guidance and support throughout the community and department, tradition preserved and carried forward the legacy of those who served before us. Just saying that, and all those who served before us today. So that's what our mission statement is. Our function is, everybody knows where our function is, right? Same lies. Our, we're all hazards fire department. What is an all hazards fire department? We cover about any kind of call type you go, fires, hazmat, medical, extrication from cars, trees falling down on fire lines, water rescue, high angle rescue, the list goes on. If we have a call in the middle of the night and our water heater is flooding the house, we go turn the water on. That's what we do for our community. That's what we're here for, is for community safety. Life safety, incident stabilization, property conservation. That's the three goals in firefighting that we teach our new people. Life safety is our safety and the community's safety. If we're not safe, the community won't be safe. Our incident stabilization, we're going to bring it under control, whatever it may be, and the property conservation, no more damage possible to that property. If there's a hazmat, we don't want to go from that property to somebody else's property. We also fire life safety codes. We do new construction, we work with a navigator to make sure new buildings coming in are up for fire codes and safety, or our public is going in, whether they're going to get food or supplies. We do annual inspections every year or two to make sure they stay in compliance with what the codes are, because you know how it is, people forget to get the fire extinguisher serviced, or they put in a new wall and then tell nobody to change this, that, and the whole building for fire life safety. Community risk reduction, we partner, we still partner with Sacramento Fire Marshal's Office, there's about 80 departments in the state now. This end this program will be recognized 2019, 2020, the partnerships for fire prevention, smoke alarm installation, carbon monoxide installation, and Channel C and safety inspection program. We have that here at DuVon Park, we'll be doing that for about eight years now. Other functions we do, we coordinate the emergency operations center, emergency operations plan for the city for natural disasters or man-made, whatever it may be, whatever it is, to shut the city down or possibly even the pandemic. We've all been going through that and go through it now. Our mitigation plan, which is a plan of vulnerabilities, of dangers, from natural disasters or man-made, we had to do that every five years, and we're up to that five years now, so we continue to get federal grants, so if we don't do that, we can't. And also, we do animal control for the city. Next, please. Our staffing, excuse me, we have four administrative staff, the fire chief, the city chief, the fire marshal, and office coordinator. We have 12 personnel on shift, have a minimum staffing of three, what that means is we don't go below of three, if possible, working per shift. That's three captains, three lieutenants, three engineers, three firefighters per shift, I mean, one captain, one lieutenant, one engineer, one firefighter per shift. We got total of three of each, 17 volunteers. Right now, we're down to captains, as of in a month, we'll be down to. Next week, we're doing captain interviews, hopefully we'll get some new captains in place here soon. And we have four volunteer slots open now, so we're currently coming back up in our man coppers there. Next, please. Our status, y'all get a monthly status of our responses. This is from January 1, 2020 to August, and I'm not going to go through all of them, most of it is. Our biggest is rescue and EMS, we run 713 colleges over a year and a half, medical, that's 38.44% of our response. And the whole total so far for that is 1,855 incidents in a year and a half. And next, our fleet. We have four engines, thank you for the 2014 new, when we got in 2014, but it's about to come up again, got about 60,000 miles on it now. Got a ladder, a rescue, specialized equipment, we got a boat, two Cali-Tocque mules ATV provided by State Parks and Commission, and we have a 1999 hazmat decon truck, where we have an incident, which is, that's a downed safety gear working there. Our fleet is about 13 years old. Next, please. Our training center, I don't know if anybody's ever seen, we're by Patrick Highway by Sunoco, see some comics boxes like this out there, is our training center. We got a two-story burn facility where we can go and do search and rescue, roof access. This building to the right, if everybody can see, we just built, it's called a flashover problem. Go and take the firemen, put them low, with hose lines, and watch the flashover come. It's going to do that sometime.
Just let me know.
Unless you don't shake weird. In 2020 to 2021, a year and a half, we've done over 4,000 hours of training, most of it out of your training. And all this was built by our firefighters, every bit of welding and everything, so. And getting back to the end.
Finally, what's up, Chen?
So we're working for a safer tomorrow, and also remember the proclamation we just got, the National Fallen Firefighters, 23rd, I mean, October 3rd, and Fire Prevention Week, October 3 through the 9th. And our motto this time is learn to sound the fire's sake. What is learn to sound the fire's sake? Fire alarms, smoke alarms, CO detectors, and different things like that. So why don't we remember that? You remember when the clothes catches on fire, what we're supposed to do?
Drop the robe.
Thank you for this time. My presentation's over. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Chief, any questions from counsel?
Chief, I know the mayor pro tem's a little bit older than I am. I understand he was an initial firefighter, right, in 1908, when you got started?
I can find out, you check your burns.
Counselman, I did enjoy working with Bill Seggers on finding some of the names of the firefighters from 1908 forward and identifying them. I think he put together a master list maybe a year ago or something.
It's interesting to go back in history when it started, what we started, the manpower we started with, everything is where we are today. Also, talking about Bill Segers, he's only committed with the Sacramento Fire Fighters Association to find the historical fire houses and fire apparatus and map it for, so very important. Any question, anytime you want to come right along, brother, come on down, go through the fire department.
Last new engine we got in, Chief.
Excuse me?
About helped to push the last new engine.
Yep.
Got video of it.
Ready for another one to put in there? So thank y'all again, if that question's going to see you or call me up.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item five, now your other.
The only update after you is that situation we have with the commercial truck is going to dissolve. Thank you to Vincent and Wesley for getting all that work done, and we should be in cities tomorrow. We will talk again about commercial sanitation later.
And I think I'll speak on behalf of the area lawn council, appreciate everybody's efforts to do what they had to do.
They really deserve all the credit, they really were outstanding in getting everything done and really coming under a very stressful situation, really came to show what we can do here in Harpsville, so I'm very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's it for a little bit.
Okay. Consent, agenda will be received as information. Unfinished business, item number six, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, it's a public hearing final reading ordinance 4421, the ordinance to lease the property of the corner of Marlboro Avenue and 7th Street to the Harpsville Rescue Squad.
I declare a public hearing open. If anyone would like to speak to ordinance 4421, please come forward, state your name and address to the record, and let me hear your comments in three minutes to ask. For new business. Scene number one, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion on ordinance 4421?
Mr. Mayor, for ten, I have the motion that we pay for the 4421.
So second.
Okay. Motion second, is there any discussion? There none, all those in favor, please take a five, I'll say aye. Aye. As opposed, a nay. There is no opposition. New business, I've spoken to most council members with the exception of Mr. Caldwell, but if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to move item number 11 to the forefront. Mr. Evans has suggested that we do this, he's got conflict, but he wants to be present whenever we take this up. Everybody good with that? Okay. So item number 11 becomes item number seven.
Yes, sir, it's First Read of Ordinance 4423, it's approval of the Bailey Bill designation of limited certification for property located 559 West Carolina Avenue, tax debt number 056090300.
Okay. Is there a motion on item 4423?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, end discussion. As you know, the Bailey Bill is a tax, a baitment, I guess is the way that we would say it, where it increases the assessment of historic buildings so that renovations can take place, and the number of years is based on the value of the initial assessment and then renovations. Mr. Evans, would you like to speak anything to that? I have a question, it's on the national register, will it continue to be on the national register?
Yes, sir, it will. Everything we have to do to the building has to be done pursuant to the state historic preservation office and the National Park Service. Their recommendations, actually their requirements are that we restore the building to its original state, so this makes that possible.
And this is good, it wasn't so many years ago, there was some consideration of whether the building should remain or not, so this is really a turnaround from that.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, for ten.
Yes, ma'am.
And that special tax, that's meant it's up to 20 minutes, correct?
Okay, that's correct. Okay, and I think this is about the second or third Bailey Bill we had in Harpsville. It's essentially passing, so. All right, if no other discussion or questions, all those in favor of ordinance 4423, please take a five and say aye. Aye. As opposed, a nay. There is no opposition. Ordinance 4423 passes first read. Thank you. All right. Item eight on the agenda, new eight, Resolution 092101, performance of housing authority of the municipal board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, for ten, I make the motion that we create the resolution, we're in line with 092101.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, end discussion. There is no discussion, all those in favor, please take a five and say aye. Aye. As opposed, a nay. There is no opposition. All right. Next one, Resolution 092102, Mr. Manager?
Sir, it's to provide, Resolution 092102 is to provide for the amendment of fees that are necessary for the operation of City of Harpsville.
Okay, is there a motion on Resolution 092102?
Mr. Mayor, for ten, I make a motion to pass Resolution 092102.
Second.
Motion second, end discussion.
I'd like to ask the manager, if he will, to bring some light to this for everyone and people.
Sure, so what we did, we talked about this in the workshop, essentially what we're doing is we are looking through all our rates, and this is not a of our rates for our water or even utilities or anything, these are more of our rental rates, or for some of the buildings that we lease and rent out to the public. We wanted to go through and update all this to more current numbers in 2021 to be more perfect what we're doing, so we presented the council a series of amendments across multiple departments, and what we're going to do is update the master fee schedule. Eventually, we will look at our rates, but not, tonight, we're just looking at some of the more of the rental rates tonight.
And some of the rates are actually going down?
Yeah, exactly, so we're trying to.
That's the important part, aren't they? Absolutely. The addition of different places, the house less to rent those.
Right, we're trying to drive traffic to different places, making them more appropriate for use, so the addition, which is downtown, around the corner, is going down in rentals so that we can have more office type and more business type things. But yes, some rates are going down, some are more appropriate, we're trying to see what we can, you know, again, make them more appropriate for 2021, again, for that first.
Thank you. Any others questions? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution 092102, please take a five, I say aye. Aye. As opposed, a nay. Resolution passes. All right, Resolution 092103, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, it's approval to authorize the expenditure of a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for City of Harpsville.
Okay, we'll need a motion, and then we'll have some discussion of that. Okay, is there a motion on 092103?
So moved, second.
Okay. Mr. Manager, you have some discussion on this?
Yes, so the mayor was unable to join us tonight, but he and I had a rather lengthy discussion about this item. This, this item for the odds, this is the premium paid portion of the American Rescue Plan Act, which is one of the five designated approved uses for the American Rescue Plan Act. And the premium pay is money that is assigned to staff who worked in the period of time that we designated for COVID. The period of time we're looking at is from March 1st to September 1st, so this is the 18-month period we're looking at, see what staff are eligible to receive funds, and some staff receive, could potentially receive up to the full 18 months, or it could be prorated depending on what you are. The mayor and I had a conversation about the different options that we presented to you all, different items. We looked at different cities across the board, and it was his desire to engage in discussion tonight about increasing the option to, from option three to option four. And essentially, what we're looking at is an increase of $60,000 to be obligated either from the ARPA money or from another source that we can go with or just about it. But the desire that the mayor and I talked about was to say that, as Harpsvilleans, it's what we do in Harpsville, we've never lost any service interruption during the entire 18 months, and the mayor wanted to recognize that for the staff who did it. In the 18 months of COVID, working alongside everyone, the water network turned off, your sanitation was picked up, your police were pleased, they did the policing, fire was put up and help emergency was received and made to be called. And along that time, our staff suffered alongside everyone in this country, but they did so without any bribing, they did so at their own peril, and to make sure the city moved forward without any hesitation. This is a recognition of that, and the idea of option four is to be in line with what other cities are doing. We did take a comprehensive look at different cities around the area, and it was our desire to be not just with them, but to actually show that Harpsville appreciates and the 60% of our budget, which is our staff, to invest in our staff, I think is money well spent. So that was our discussion, I'm willing to definitely answer questions, what we have, but that was our desire.
Okay, I gotta ask a question. So, just change, I'm not gonna say change, but all right.
Sure.
Would that include the exempt employees that we discussed?
Yeah, so I think what happened in that, in that conversation, it got very emotional as we know, and I think some things were lost in transition, but the overall goal is to do what you guys all accomplished, which was to, was to give premium pay to employees of Harpsville. It still will include that tier approach that we're looking at for the part-time workers and the volunteer workers throughout the city. That will turn increase alongside if we go to option four as opposed to option three. And essentially, what we'll do is we'll increase the total number of money from $2,700 to potential $3,150 for all full-time employees, and I believe it went up to, I don't know, about $700 something dollars for the part-time.
Yeah, I got that part, but some employees that not to take, not to be compensated, I'm kind of.
In this, in this scenario, all employees we cover.
Yeah.
We do feel, this is the kind of the general consensus across the state, is that this is not hazard pay, and that was confused in the last one. This is, this is money on top of what, hazard pay is for people that put themselves in harms risk, and police and fire typically first and foremost receive that hazard pay because that is their, the risk that they put themselves in. This was something different. So COVID is unlike anything that you've ever experienced before, and across the city, my finance clerks, my sanitation drivers, the police, the fire, certainly, Neptune Island employees, they all put themselves at the same risk with, by being around each other to receive COVID, and in fact, all of them experienced at some point shutdowns in each department because they went out due to quarantines due to COVID. Many of our employees got sick, thankfully, thank God, none of them died. Though we did have several people across the board that lost loved ones who are connected to them, potentially from exposure they received working here for the city of Harpsville. So this would reward all employees across the board at a, not a flat rate, but a rate that is derived from hours worked during COVID, and that is reward tied explicitly to the hours they've worked, no more, no less.
Yeah. And that is great.
So the hourly rate you'd be paying for at tier four is what?
So that went from.
Seventy-five?
175, yes, that's correct.
Is that what it is?
Eighteen months at 175, potentially up to, and that calculates out to roughly 3187 hours, I think, a year, is that what it was? Okay, 3,000, I got what I'm saying, so. That was based on a total years of 18 months worked, 2,080 hours, excuse me, 173 hours per month, at $175, it averaged out to be, and we did the same calculation for our parts of workers, and tiered it in a fair that made sense to let, and to get something to compensate that for what they've done.
And the things we talked about in the work session, looking at tier three, it was going to leave us 79% of our funds left over if that's what we can vote for, so how does this impact that now?
Right.
I mean, what percentage?
Sure, so the new percentage, looking at this, would be 11%, so we are still looking at that 79%. It doesn't, we're right now at a 10%, so we go up to 11% with the $60,000 decrease overall. So we're looking at, you have 10, 90% in the American.
It was 9.1 whatever.
9.1 whatever, we rounded it, so this is looking at 11%, and that is actually more in line with what other cities in our area are doing. Again, not to, this is just to give some more evidence about it, I did learn that Darlington County did actually, instead of doing 1.04, we estimated the total money was actually 1.8, as I learned today, which is close to about 12% of the total budget. Florence and D actually did increase theirs to about 9, 10% as well. They, they added additional $260,000 on top of the $590 for people who were not typically eligible under it, although you can make the case to make everyone eligible under this, like I said, but this would include all employees across the board.
Okay, we've been talking some about tier four, I'm going to introduce some amendments, and it's a second, we can continue, far, talking about tier four. And, yes, sir.
And the knocking three to four.
Well, the original, the initial, what we just talked, motion and second was tier three. So the amendment I'm proposing will be tier four, and the language has to change a little bit, so I propose to offer an amendment whereas the fourth paragraph will read, whereas funds of up to $410,000 of the American Rescue Plans Emergency Release Allocation to the City of Harpsville will be included in annual budget amendment for council to approve prior to 2021, 2022 fiscal year end to premium pay for the city's essential workers. And then the second part of the amendment, the next paragraph we read, gets approved. Now therefore, it is all of the emergency council, council and City of Harpsville authorization for the up to $410,000 if approved. So those two changes to the amendment. So that's my proposal, that's my motion, is there a second on this?
Second.
Second.
And if there is a second, we can further discuss, is there any um, this call, or is anything you need to tell us as a, a financial?
Yeah, I think, I think Daniel's numbers were fairly close, it's one seventy-five a month, right? So, that was uh, what we did, you know, when I look at the numbers, one thing that um, and I thank y'all for considering that amendment, we mentioned briefly in the workshop that, you know, we were really hoping for four or five, and when we got the updated information from local municipalities, we did see that it, it went up to a ten percent average, so this would put us at eleven percent, and I think it speaks to what Hartsville does, and when we look at our total, total number of employees, the full amount that is available, that's going to be within ninety-nine people, sixty-two percent of the people employed and volunteering by Hartsville, and as you know, that this is the tier to purchase that y'all all discussed and came up with, which I think is, is very fair, um, you know, the range is, is going to be really good on that now, from one thirty-five to six seventy-five, um, so I am, I'm comfortable with that, and he did well at explaining it, so, and it is very complicated, so a lot of behind-the-scenes work to get us to this point.
Okay, thank you, any questions? I'll just call.
I'm struggling with just a little bit of the board, and I think I was the only one that was just here to, and it's hard to say, gosh, don't do this, but I, I look back at that act and I'm reminded it says, it's intended to reward those who risk the most while earning the least, and um, you know, it's, it's a hard thing, I, I don't think we ever should do things just because other people have done it, that, that's not going to be my reason for doing that, I was, I just, I think it needs to be based on something else, I hear, I hear the will of council, I think.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGee, any other uh, discussion? Okay, so, we now will vote on the amendment, and then if it passes, we will vote on the original motion. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, and then we're going back to the original motion, all those in favor of resolution oh nine twenty-one oh three, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, nay. Okay, the amendment, the amended motion passes. Thank everybody for the discussion, and thank everybody for the hard talking, it's been a journey, a real journey. Okay, um, our next item of business, um, is first reading of ordinance forty-four twenty-two, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to amend by repealing or replacing chapter fourteen, business license article two, business license program of the city's code ordinance in accordance with the Business License Bill, H forty-four thirty-one, passed by the South Carolina Legislature in September of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, you've read the, the final reading of this, is there a motion on ordinance forty-four twenty-two?
So moved.
Okay, is there a motion, second, in discussion? This has been brewing at the state legislature forever.
Yes.
Just is pretty good outcome from what it could have been, is that my understanding?
That is absolutely correct, this has been, uh, many years since we've been discussing this since I've been in City Durham, and so, uh, what this was, was a huge coordination effort by um, all the cities, the municipal association, our representatives of the state, and this, what is happening now is that we, I think we have a fair um, business license program that's going to be uniform across the state, so any business doing work within South Carolina will be on the even playing field, it will be on the same classification list, um, and what we are doing here is we're updating our programs to be along in that, but I will say that uh, Kareem Thompson was actually on the board that helped decide this for the cities and helped actually write essentially this.
Yeah, so, um, again, just like you said, there was a lot of concern, standardization being one of the biggest things for, from all the businesses that work all along South Carolina, so this is going to help with that, it's going to be consistent throughout the whole state, so everybody by January first has to have this adopted, um, South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office is gonna um, run the, as far as the NAICS codes and how those are gonna be a portion to the um, businesses, but it gives everyone a start date of May the first to April the thirtieth for the business license, and calculates everyone on their previous year's calendar or fiscal year's revenue, and so everyone will have the same classification, um, but everyone does pick their rates, and so, our rates that we have now, we had to be revenue neutral, so we had to work through that, and we have that right now, I think the um, increase, after all the businesses get reclassified, because they will be reclassified, we have a point one increase, which is like nine hundred something dollars, so um, uh, there's going to be a lot of winners, though it's, the winners are mostly the smaller businesses, those are going to be the ones that are going to win as far as what their fees are going to be. Not much of a difference here in Hartsville, because we have been working towards standardization, working with M A S D, um, so our dates are still the same, so businesses are going to do exactly what they've been doing this whole time for business license, they expect to renew their business licenses in May, and they know that it runs through April the thirtieth. So, it, it's, it's a win, it's a win for everyone, there, there's better definitions in the ordinance, um, for better understanding, there are some classes that you can add, but class eight, which is our contractors, is also going to be um, done by law, so now before it was kind of optional, but now it's just straight what they say.
Well, thank you so much for your work on that, I think we all know who to go to if you have any questions.
Absolutely.
I think the standardization for businesses is, is good, that's what we've been wanting for a long time, and, and the revenue neutral is, as long as, you know, for good there, I guess that's the best we can hope for there.
So, this mayor, for ten, maybe that directs us to the finance director on this one, since we have to be revenue neutral and we have to change our period of, for this year and end it in April, so begin May of next year, how does that impact the budget?
It's been the same.
And we've already been, we're already that way.
We've been doing this since twenty sixteen.
We've already been doing this way, yep.
So, we, we actually already.
That timeframe is already there.
Because Kareem was already on the thing, we already adopted this in twenty sixteen, so we are, we're, well, we're already doing that, so it doesn't want to impact the budget as currently it sits right now.
I think we anticipated that change somewhere down the road.
I joked that, even if Florence adopted the ordinance first, we were doing it first, so.
Exactly, I remember, I'm going to tell you, exactly, okay. Uh, any other, uh, questions or comments? Thank you again for your work on that, that's, I know that was interesting and awesome challenge.
Thank you, Graham.
Okay, uh, all in favor of passing ordinance forty-two twenty-two, please, forty-four twenty-two, please signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, nay, there is no opposition, first reading, passes. Okay, we have already done the Bailey Bill, so uh, we are ready for executive session, is there a motion to enter executive session, to it's South Carolina Code, Criminal Information Section thirty-eight dash four dash seventy, A two, for discussion, attorney flight privilege information regarding negotiation of a new ordinance and new contract for services and potential litigation.
So moved.
Okay, in discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, nay, there is no opposition, we are in the next session. Thank you, everybody.